We call the ordinance subcommittee meeting of January 25th to order. And I think we have a couple minutes to approve. I did receive the latest ones and looked over them.
I have one change to in the very top, not listed as being present.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then I know we had to set it down.
Oh geez. I think you were.
Yeah.
That's okay.
That'd be nice to be.
Say she won't be getting nervous.
I'm a ghost. I'm a ghost.
Congratulations.
So, um, I know it said that the next meeting would be on February 8th. And I was just saying we had to reschedule it, so I didn't know if you wanted to put in a agenda in that.
Uh, we could.
I was thinking about that, wondering if it would be appropriate to say since postponed.
Yeah, that's probably fine.
Or since, since, since postponed.
Correct, yeah.
Alright, so we can approve those with the...
Since postponed, with the changes.
With the changes? Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th.
And your previous...
In the number four two.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, good. So, uh, do we have anybody here for public speak time? Anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
Mm.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so Chief Alberdi, I was informed that maybe you were interested in having a word about the human rights ordinance to begin with.
Happy to field questions if there are.
Okay. I mean, we're, we're still in a, in the kind of exploratory infancy of that particular item.
Okay.
Um, we've had, I think, one discussion on it, and we weren't exactly sure. Well, and I think Counselor Hayes, is that something you brought forward?
I did.
So, because nothing accompanied it, so we weren't, um, exactly sure, maybe exactly what the, what we're looking for here.
Well, and that was one of the questions that I have for you is, um, I don't know if we need to do the ordinance first and then create the commission, or if you create the parameters of the commission and then the ordinance.
Um...
Would the commission be right to mirror an ordinance, or...
I, I think, no. I think that we would, so we talked about this, the different ways to create committees. The city council does have the ability to create a committee, which is something that is relatively new to me, um, as far as the process of that. Uh, so I believe that the ordinance to create the committee would come first.
Mm-hmm.
And then the committee, and that would, I think, I'm happy to, Joe, you can jump in here too. I'm happy, I, I think that it would kind of define the parameters of that committee. Um, I know that some, at our last discussion, people had kind of talked about, well, is this going to be a place where if, if there's a, um, someone has a grievance, that they're going to come to this committee? And we didn't think that that was necessarily going to be their role. Um, and I, I think we were also, you know, one of the things we were trying to figure out is who, who, um, you know, looking at a target, our target audience of who's going to be on the committee. Um, I think that there might be something similar that's not a committee. East Hampton Matters, I believe, was mentioned. Um, so, and I don't know the status of that, or, or, um, if that's, you know, if we would, if we wanted to reach out to them and get their input on as well.
So, that kind of leads to my question, so that if we're doing the resolution first about having the human rights commission?
That would be an ordinance to create the committee.
Or to be a resolution, so a couple of different, it would be, uh...
For, for the committee?
The resolution would be first, and then you create, I think, is what you're saying.
Um, well...
I don't think, I don't think a resolution has any binding anything. I think if you wanted to create a committee, it would have to be an ordinance.
The ordinance is to create a committee.
So they can run up parallel tracks and help it at the same time?
Yeah.
I don't think you'd even need a resolution.
No.
So, I...
Please, Barbara.
For example, for the right to farm ordinance, we have a right to farm ordinance, and within the right to farm ordinance, there is a agricultural commission. And it's kind of like, we have the CPA, and then within the CPA guidelines, there is a CPA commission. So, it seems like if you want to do a human's rights ordinance, then within that would be the commission.
The commission.
Creation of a commission.
That's what I was wondering.
Okay.
So it is the resolution ordinance first. And then as far as the makeup of that, I've seen a couple of different ways where it's structured, where you have, um, you know, like the city council makes an appointment, the mayor makes an appointment, there are two people from another group, you know, possibly from East Hampton Matters, or something like that. But the way that committee is put together, the different people, we have different seats on that board.
And, and do you have, um, a vision of what, like, tasks the board would do, or...
Do, I brought the gold standard, from what I've seen. And, um, I think what would be a good way to kind of look at this, it would be, you know, I, I think a good portion of this could probably be kind of stricken out because of how we have the rules for our standing committees anyway, because this goes into great detail about what the minutes should entail, what the records should be, and how that goes forward. But I thought, because this kind of had everything with it, that this would be a good place to start, because it's easier to kind of take things away than create. So I brought you guys some copy of that one.
Good. Do you have that in digital, too?
Yeah, I can do that.
Can you email that to us?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll need a little time to process this.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what I wanted to do, is, like, where should I put my energies to support this? And if it is in a resolution or an ordinance, I would just kind of like clear direction on that right now.
Sure. Okay. Great. And Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Okay, so, I just, to skip some of that, what, how, this came up in that last discussion, what do you see as the role of that commission? Do you see this commission being involved in being an intermediary between human rights complaints? Do you see them being involved in resolutions? Do you see it just being an educational organization?
Actually, all of those, you hit the top three.
But you, you would see them...
Yeah, I do, absolutely, for sure.
Because I think it came up the last discussion. I, we, my, was sort of like against the formation for kind of three main reasons. One, a major one, I just, I'm afraid that it becomes an intermediary, that if someone has a crime committed against them, or a human rights violation, is best handled by the police, because they can take that action.
Right.
My concern, and then also, whatever you become a public organization, that, whatever you are complaining about, it becomes public record. And are there some of those things that you feel are human rights violations that are truly you want to have public? And is there some liability saying that person said that? And what if you're wrong, what kind of liability aspects?
In my research, I haven't seen that come up. I mean, most of the people who do come before a human rights commission understand that that is a public forum. And there is a, you know, usually not an application, but, you know, a form that you fill out where you register your complaint and that you bring it before the board. But I think it'd also be good to have as an advisory commission, committee, so that when we do have situations like, you know, what happened to Mount Tom, the Confederate frat, past city councilors, that kind of stuff, that we do have somebody that we can talk to, who can kind of be, be expert on this.
Yeah, I would like, hmm, that's who I would talk to.
So, Counselor McCoy, you got all my points. So, my, my initial, uh, two reasons, um, my, the initial reason I want to be here was to field any questions of, of me, or what we currently do, for civil rights issues. And then the second part of that was, piggybacking on Counselor McCoy, what exactly is this committee going to do, what's their, what's their latitude, what, what's the intent? Um, and then, of course, from my end, there's some investigatory concerns regarding a lot of these complaints, and what crime, as it pertains to my detectives doing their jobs, um, are there going to be any sort of, because it's a public forum, which is concerning, any complaints there, public record, we run into public record laws, and that may not mesh well with my investigators who are trying to do their due diligence, if, particularly if it's a civil rights violation, hate crime, or that sort of thing. So, just want to be cautious as to upfront what I know, uh, as far as what this committee makeup, and what the parameters are, what, you know, what their goals, and what their ideas moving forward are.
I think a lot of it is outreach and education, you know, which we need. And, um, as far as specific complaints, I've seen everything from commissions that are able to find individuals and, you know, bring in the police force, like, there was one, I think it was Chicago off the top of my head. But they were given an incredible amount of control and latitude with those kind of situations. This particular document that I've given them has a lot of those things in it, but like I said, I think that's something that we're going to edit down to kind of be more in keeping with what East Hampton's needs are. And that would be easy enough to work with you on, and as far as anything that you think is going to overlap into a legal jurisdiction.
Well, I think any, well, I think any civil rights violation is going to overlap into a, into a legal jurisdiction and/or criminalized. I think that's, speaking of Counselor McCoy's rights, so, education outreach should make sense to me.
Mm-hmm.
It seems that we never have enough of that. But, I don't know that, that the committee would start, would want to get involved in matters related to hate crimes or, or civil rights violations that somebody could prosecute or do. From the death, I guess, from the best of those.
Well, and maybe it is an advisory committee that somebody has a complaint, and it's a, you know what, this actually is a civil rights violation, and you should go to the police with this one. So it's kind of a sounding board for them to see where exactly they do stand for that.
Okay. Alright, so that, I feel like that gives us a little bit more information than what we have.
I just wanted to ask, Jim, can that be sent to all of the council?
Yeah, sure. Happy to.
Good. Alright, so we'll review that and we'll come back to it, unless Mayor, you have something to say?
Well, I think the chief and I would like it also.
Yeah.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You'd like it, huh?
Yeah. So, since we have the other chief in the room, I know that you were interested in saying something about, so maybe a quick update on the food truck ordinance and where we're at right now. So we did have a draft, um, and since then, we've gotten feedback from our health agent and the city clerk, that as opposed to, um, neither of them are thrilled with it, because what it does is it kind of reinforces our permitting process as it stands now, and make forces food trucks to go through that permitting process. Um, that being said, uh, you know, I think having a streamlined permitting process where, you know, a food truck goes directly through the Board of Health and does not necessarily, um, come through the city clerk's office, it could be beneficial. Um, so we're kind of back to the drawing board, um, which, you know, we've been asked to kind of ditch our initial attempts, uh, to kind of keep it the way it is, um, which I'm not against necessarily. But, um, you know, one of the things we did want to address was we wanted to address the parking, so a food truck couldn't just park somewhere indefinitely. Um, and we wanted to kind of identify certain spaces in East Hampton that would make sense for food trucks. For example, not parking in front of a restaurant probably makes sense. You have a vendetta against a, you know, this particular restaurant, you go park your food truck there, and, you know. So, um, so we still have some work to do on it, but I, I know that you said something about propane, so I'm curious to hear what that...
Uh, yeah. The way the food trucks are, because it's a, a vehicle, the transportation of propane falls under Department of Transportation or Massachusetts State Police. They're allowed to travel with 200 pounds of propane. So if you've seen the big silver tanks that some people, not the big, big round ones, the skinny ones?
Mm-hmm.
There's two of those. I told you, if you Google Philly food truck explosion, that was just one 100-pound tank. And it created a huge fireball. So, because of the size of them, they're not required, as long as it's on the truck, they're not required a permit.
Okay.
If they put that tank on the ground, it requires a permit from the fire department. It worries me when there's 100 pounds of propane attached to a truck that could burn, or it could get in an accident. Um, state police don't really have the assets to, the truck team, to force that. 90% of the food trucks in East Hampton are fantastic. They search us out, what do we need? They get the proper inspections, because if you look at them, they're rolling kitchens. They have fryers, grills, they have the hoods, the ansel systems. Well, the last two years, we've had a problem with one who got kicked out of Springfield because they didn't have health department permits, they didn't have permits for their, um, hoods weren't clean. They went to Amherst, they got kicked out of Amherst, and when they came here, they told Captain Hemmen, well, I don't know why you're giving me a hard time, because I went Springfield and Amherst twice a week. We call Springfield and Amherst Fire Departments. And they both said, oh, that truck? Yeah, we threw them out of town, we didn't find them, because their hoods weren't in compliance. It's kind of hard for us to track them down when they're, they're coming in and out. And I talked to Jackie in a quick conversation on it. And the only thing we, kind of, that I was talking was, they get a permit from the fire, a no-fee permit from the fire department.
Yep.
Then we have some enforcement already where if their fire extinguishers aren't compliant, or they don't have any, they can be fined.
Mm-hmm.
If their hood system doesn't get cleaned, they're no different than, than any restaurant producing large quantities of grease laden vapors, they have to get them cleaned every quarter. But these food trucks, because they bounce around, let's say, there's only one or two bad ones that I've seen through the whole valley. But the problem is, they get those hood systems loaded with grease, you get a fire going in that truck, next thing you know, that 100-pound propane bomb is going to clear out a neighborhood.
And so that, that inspection that you're talking about, would, do you foresee that being an, like, an ordinance that would, that would require them to do that? Or is it something the health department could...
Well, if, if you were going to create a food truck ordinance, there would be a provision in there where they require a calendar year permit from the fire department. And during a calendar year, if their fire extinguishers expired, and needed new tags, or their hood system needed to be cleaned, that they would notify us in writing that it had been done.
Okay.
Just like we do with the restaurants. We have a good number of restaurants that require quarterly cleaning of their hood system. We don't go check them every quarter, they just send us the results.
Okay.
And the contractors that clean them are very good about telling us if their hood system is not compliant.
Okay, that's good. And I, and I think, I mean, I think from what I can gather from Jackie is that, you know, generally, it's a, the, the health department thing is an annual permit. Um, so, I, let us sit on this one. Let us figure this out. I mean, we've had food trucks forever, we might as well have it for a little longer, and, and figure out if we, if we can't come up with something that makes sense. And I'll talk to Jackie about, you know, if this is something that could be part of the health, but she doesn't want any extra stuff, as far as I can tell, on, on her plate. Um, you know, so maybe as we look at this, we can pare it down to something that is, um, it works for, for, yes, Barbara, did you have a thought?
Jim, you be first.
Yes.
Chief, uh, I think our thinking was that the first spot by the pond would be a good place for a food, a food truck. Of course, there's a lot of traffic there, and I don't know about placement of the tanks and how that all is, and if there's any thought about where it's placed in the truck, within the truck, outside the truck, in the back of the truck, where someone would have an impact if it were hit.
Some are underneath, between the frame rails, some are outside the back doors, you see one mounted on each side of the door, where there's no, there's no requirement for collision protection on it.
That seems a bit silly.
Yeah.
No requirement, and these are for vehicles that are on, on the road, on a regular basis.
As long as they're under 200 gallons, they're, they're not covered under DOT regulations.
You noticed the Philly food truck, and you noticed that, and said, geez, look it up on the internet, and...
Quite the fireball.
Quite the fireball. I just wonder if we should get some thought about where it is placed.
Well, placement becomes a problem, um, and what, the one that comes to mind is Pleasant Street, no, with the breweries. The food trucks there bring huge amounts of business, not only the food truck, you have two breweries in it.
Yeah.
Right.
And I may have been known to visit those food trucks. And so I think...
And the breweries.
So, I think if we restrict where we put them, if you look at spacing, you're going to really hamper what they have, that great thing that the two breweries have going.
No, no, wait, I wasn't, I was thinking on a public street, and that the brewery that tends to be a...
That's private, private.
Private, private quasi-public parking area that was different, but this is right on a public street where there's lots of traffic.
I don't think it's a problem, because they're, anywhere they're going to be downtown, the vehicle speed is not that great, where it would cause significant damage if they did hit the truck. Because the trucks all, keep them attached.
Yeah.
The tanks attached, they don't want to take them, because if they put them off the ground, they have to get a permit.
They have to get a permit. If they're, are they, are they inside the trucks, or are they outside?
Uh, not usually inside the truck itself, they'll be underneath, they'll be on the back, like on the back bumper.
Do we have any thoughts about what's safer or not safer?
Well, and also, it might be, it might be dependent on the design of the truck. You know, like, some, some trucks might have it built for the back, some might have it built underneath, or, you know. So if we, if we legislated that, and someone had a truck that they spent a lot of money on, and it was in the wrong location, that could be potentially, um, legislating them out of East Hampton. So...
Yeah, we didn't want to, we didn't want to get into that, we, same with, we want to make it a no-fee permit.
Right. I mean, it makes sense.
They're going to pay a fee to the Board of Health for their permit to do food.
Right. So Barbara, thoughts?
So, my, my initial, I saw, um, the, your draft, and some of it was fine. I, my thought was that I think that Jackie should do the permitting. And I was, I kind of said, um, food trucks, mobile food vendors wish to do business in the city, which is kind of must be licensed by the Board of Health and permitted by the fire department, could do something like that.
Okay.
Could do something just simply like that. But the rest of what you were mostly concerned about, I felt, kind of, was more parking, like, so, why have a separate ordinance, which I think the mobile vendor ordinance is, used to be gotten rid of.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's what we're going to have to scrap it.
Because, you know what, that came in because of the fireworks, mostly.
Right.
And we don't have the fireworks anymore, not to say we will never have them again.
Right.
But most of the vendors that we see are food related, so they would need to be permitted through the Board of Health anyway.
Right.
So, that, that's a whole different thing. So what I did was I kind of went through the traffic rules and orders, and saw, kind of looked to see how it might fit in. So first you have to have the definition, okay? And then, um, I added a new section, restrictive parking, food trucks, mobile vendors, and then kind of took what you had and plumped it in there.
Yep.
But the more I looked at it, I got really confused, because you're saying in here that they can park in public parking spots that meet the following criteria, and then you, you put one parking space on Caddystreet. Does that mean that you can't have any food trucks parked anyplace else?
Unless, unless there's, um, a special event that has prior approval.
Well, what about, like, okay, the tattoo place, I've seen that grilled cheese thing out there, or, you know, I guess the, the parking lot behind Brass Cat is kind of...
It's private.
Private, but if they're right on the street, you know, they're pretty close to the street. So, and, so, and then you said, you can park for five hours, but Caddystreet is only one hour parking.
One hour parking, yeah.
So you're like, okay, well, that, so then I'm like, went back and I said, okay, you could have an exception, but then, what about, like, if somebody wants to park on Union Street? I mean, they, are they, can they not park there?
Well, we hadn't, we hadn't come up with the exhaustive list of spaces yet. We, we kind of were, that was the first stab at that, figuring out the spaces.
Yep.
So Union Street might have a couple spaces that make sense.
Okay.
That's, I think, still open to interpretation.
But right now, it looks like there's just one spot out there.
That one was the one that we knew for sure, that we thought made sense.
That's the only one, and then...
And this parking lot.
And then the ones behind the mills, I mean, I, I think the definition is really a little hard to, I mean, I was like, I don't know what you mean by the first three spaces at the rear, and it was kind of unclear as to what they actually meant.
Sure.
But it seemed to me that you had the food permitting part would be the Board of Health and the Fire Department, and the rest of it all is pretty much...
Traffic rules and orders.
Traffic rules and orders. So why don't you just add it to the traffic rules and orders, and not, yeah, have a whole separate thing?
Okay.
Just kind of keep it condensed.
Okay.
That was my idea, and I kind of put it together a little bit, but, you know, it's just a first stab at it.
That's good feedback. We can use, we'll use that. Thanks, Barbara. Okay. Any other thoughts? Chief, okay.
What happens now, if somebody comes in to see Jackie for a permit, we'll schedule it when they, because they have to bring their truck, so we'll schedule it, when she's, when she's doing it, Captain Hemmen will be there at the same time.
Okay, good.
So we can...
Do it all at once.
...go from there and...
Yeah, great.
What were you thinking about for a fee for the permit?
Um, well, the current fee, I think, is, what, 200 a year?
See, that, that's, that was the whole confusion.
That was, that was confusing.
So it would be whatever the Board of Health determines that the food truck fee would be, and there wouldn't be any other, like, I mean, that's...
Yeah, because, because we were, we were thinking about, you know, since we got that feedback, looking at junking the mobile vendor ordinance, which, I can't, is it 200 a year? It was expensive, and so nobody was getting it.
Or that you're like, by events, and, but, it's confused, really confusing, and you want these people to do good, and you want to encourage them to make money and come to town.
Sure.
Why double permit them?
And just to be clear, so that permit, that seasonal permit, would cover them regardless of whether or not they're parked in private or public property?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So private property, they still need to get a permit?
Yep.
Indeed.
I just want to go back really quick to what you were saying, I want to make sure I understood you the right way. So you're saying that there would be a calendar year permit that we would give by the calendar year, and it would be up to the food vendor to show that any expirations they had on the fire range?
The, they have the commercial hood...
Okay.
Which has its own, um, extinguishing system.
Uh-huh.
Those have to be tagged, it's checked annually.
Okay.
But if they're producing heavy grease laden vapors, um, frying, grill, or deep fat frying, those hood systems have to be cleaned every quarter.
Okay, so, would you have to just check to see if they're too dirty, or would you just have to check to see if the date was within compliance?
Just that is, because the companies that do the cleanup, they're licensed through the Convoel.
Yep.
And they're, if they were to look the other ways, and they went to the truck and it was really bad...
Yep.
And didn't clean it, they would be not only fined by the Convoel, but they would lose their license to operate. There's good money in cleaning kitchen hood systems, I think. So they're very good about telling us when they're not compliant.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Good. Thanks for the feedback. Um, now, we do have some other guests here tonight, um, so I know that you guys had wanted to come in and talk about, um, the progress that's going on, and...
Sure.
Yep.
Thanks, Salem. So, thank you all for sitting down to meet with us here. We've had a chance to meet with a lot of the city officials, the mayor, not so much with the city council, though. We've had some time, opportunity to meet with Joe and Salem, but not a lot of the rest of you. So, I'm Steve Riley, and I'm the attorney for Hand and Care Facility, and I have Alexa Gallagher and Tom Gallagher, who are on the board for Hand and Care Facility. And I don't know if you want to pull up Tom, in case, uh, people have any questions. So, what I first wanted to do was just kind of introduce ourselves, answer any questions that you guys might have, provide an update on the project. I'm sure you all know that it's ongoing, but probably have some questions about where is it at, when might it open, what's it gonna look like, a lot of other things like that. So before we got into any of the zoning things that you might be considering with the new recreational changes, I didn't know if you had any questions about, that were projects specific? Or with respect to the recreational law, or what might be happening at the State House with respect to the, the medical and how it's gonna interact with the recreational. So any questions that you have, I'd be happy to try to answer, provide information on.
Well, I'd be happy to hear where you're at, where, what's happening.
Sure, so, we have built that, we're in the process of buildout. And depending on which floor you're on, you'll see different stages.
Did you describe the location?
Yeah, 122 Pleasant Street, and it's in the mill building to the left of East Works. So if you look at East Works, it's directly to the left. Jim Whitmer is the owner of the building, and we, he's our landlord, so we've worked with Jim on that project there. And what we have is, when you walk in on the street level, you're actually walking into the rear of the project. That street level floor is gonna be cultivation. So what you would see if you walked in, and I know, I missed the meeting where we did a walkthrough, but Salem, were you at that?
I was not, I'm not.
Was anybody here at the walkthrough, Mayor and the Chief?
And James, he stood in for Salem.
Yeah.
Okay.
We made a presentation for Salem.
I was, yeah, I was in Cleveland.
And Joe, well, you were not that long, but you've been there.
Yeah, Joe's been there, I know, and, and we had really bad weather that day, I had tried to get up from Boston, I couldn't make it. Long story short, I'd be happy to get any of you a walkthrough, so that you can see what's going on there. So Salem has my contact information, the mayor's office does, anybody does. We're there every day, on site someone is, so it's not even too difficult to set that up. So if you ever wanna see it, and just stop buying your way home from work, just reach out to us and we'll get that set up for you to be able to do that. But just to give you a brief description, when you walk in from the, from the back, from the Pleasant Street side, you would be walking into what is really the cultivation part of the facility. We have approximately thirty-six thousand square feet, the bulk of that is cultivation. What you would see on that floor are essentially different grow rooms that are set up. So you'll see, I don't know how many are there now in the final plans, but you would see a number of different grow rooms, so that different phases of the process of growing the plants can take place, and there's no cross contamination and those kind of things. On the bottom level, which would be the street level and back, where the new parking has been done, and they've done a nice job with the project over there, really nice. And I can't believe how quickly either, Mayor, because I expected maybe in the spring to see some action there, and at this point, it looks great. But that would be the actual dispensary itself on that first floor. You'd also have in there the safe offices, some processing areas. And as I said, I'd be happy to go through with you, I hope to have final plans here today. We actually have one large set, they're at the building. I was there, I didn't have all the keys to get to the room I needed to, cuz we just actually locked that building up now, based on the money that's been spent already on the buildout. So I don't have them, unfortunately. But the investment there is a bit of a moving target, I'd probably say, depending on what you wanna add into that four to five million dollars, at this point is a reasonable number for what that's gonna cost over there to build that facility out. But at this point, on the second floor, we've framed it, there's rough electric, sheet rock started to go up. I was there, not this Wednesday, but the previous Wednesday. So I don't know what's happened since, but that's where we, we were at about a week from today.
How's it work in terms of, you said you have a dispensary? So if I have a prescription, am I going to you, or are you dispersing to, to other places where I would go to get my medical marijuana?
So you would go to us. So in Massachusetts, it's a vertically integrated model. And the maximum amount of licenses you can have for dispensaries are three. But you can only grow what, you can only sell what you grow. So that may change a little with the recreational, and that may change with the reg. But as it is today, you can't sell anything that you didn't grow. So what you would do is get a registration from the Mass Department of Public Health, a card basically. And then you would designate which dispensary is going to be your dispensary. So, for example, yours would be East Hampton, so you would be registered with us. Now, you could register for other sites, but you'd have to do that independently. But what you would basically do is come to the site, there's security procedures that you would have to go through with that ID card. Ultimately, you'd be let into the dispensary itself, which, if you wanna kinda have an idea of what that will look like, if none of you have been to Netta in Northampton, that's the only one that's operating now, Western Mass. An Apple Store is probably the best way to describe it. I mean, we wanna have a really high-end retail experience there, because it's gonna be a competitive market, and we're gonna, obviously, there's a dispensary in Northampton, we wanna outdo them, hopefully. So the goal is gonna be to have as nice a spot as we can possibly have. That building has some great features, given that it's an old mill, some of the wood and brick and all that kinda stuff. We'd like to incorporate that into the final design as well for the dispensary. And at this point, we've mostly been focusing on the cultivation. There's an issue we have in the basement that we're working through now with some water at that site. So we haven't built out that bottom floor yet for the dispensary. And the other reason being that we're doing this in phases, and the DPH will allow for some licensing, so that we can start growing, and then at that point, we'll have the ability to go down and work on the dispensary.
The timeline from seed to cultivation?
So it, it's, that, that's a bit of a moving target question too, because the DPH is in the process of redoing their regulations. One of the things they're gonna do is allow you to start from clones possibly, as opposed to seed. And that would significantly change, probably by three or four weeks at least, maybe six weeks, how long that grow process is gonna take. But our goal would be to hopefully have the cultivation piece of this done, March, April. We've thrown many different dates out, but at this point, I think probably an April date is reasonable. And then there's gonna be some time to then grow product and finish the dispensary. I would suspect that we would have a license from the state to sell early July at the early date, and probably September at the late date. But you could pretty much count on July to September as being fully licensed and able to sell.
And what is the, and then I'll stop so somebody will see a question, but what is the dispense, like, will it be visible from the outside, do you just have to know that it's there to go there? It's not like people walk by and look?
Yeah, so the state didn't exactly enable the industry to do the advertising, you would see in a lot of other industries. So we have pretty significant restrictions in terms of signage. There are restrictions in terms of what you can see from outside the dispensary. So, long story short, you can expect a very small discreet sign and seeing nothing from the street.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the best example I would give, if you haven't been to Netta in Northampton, or driven by there, it, it might be worth a drive-by, just so you can get a flavor of what it will look like. Because the CMRs for the medical dictates what we can do in terms of advertising, what signs, what can be on. For example, there's not gonna be any marijuana leaves on the signs, that's prohibited by the regulation.
You haven't seen our sign.
So is, is this always going to remain just a medical, a medical dispensary? Or at some point, would you turn it over to also be selling recreationally?
We would like the ability to do it recreationally if the, the city were open to that. So that's gonna be a decision that the city would need to make, and if you wanted to do that, we would like to do that as well. And then I, I don't know exactly what the city would be looking for. I know we met, met with the mayor, and there were talks of a lot of different possible options, on how many of these the city would want, or would they wanna have cafes, and a lot of those different kinda things. One thing I'd like to kind of just point out to everybody that's here too, is that by virtue of us cultivating here in East Hampton, the investment that we've made is pretty significant, as I said, it's probably around five million dollars. I, I would expect reasonably, we could, just to give, don't hold me to these numbers, but maybe thirty to fifty employees, depending on shifts and different things. So we've made a pretty significant investment in East Hampton. If, if another group came in and just dispensed, for example, their investment would probably look along the lines of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for dispensary space. Because the cultivation operation is significantly larger, requires much more investment, employees and all those type of things than just the dispensary. So while we're growing in East Hampton and selling in East Hampton, I think we provide the best benefit to the city, because we do offer that cultivation space, which anybody else that comes in is not gonna offer. They're just gonna wanna sell you marijuana product.
Is the recreational marijuana industry vertically integrated as the?
No. Yeah, so that's not in the ballot question. So if you look, the, the marijuana, medical marijuana ballot question's about three or four pages long. And then it was then filled in by CMRs, the regulations created by the DPH. The recreational has a ballot question that's prob, I don't know how many pages.
Twenty-five or so.
Yeah, twenty-five pages, in that area. I don't know if any of you have looked at it, but that ballot question is much more particular with a lot of different things. The question I think is gonna be, what does the state legislature do to that ballot question? Because there are items and different things that are in there that probably aren't good for, for East Hampton, for municipalities, for the state. A perfect example is the home grow. The home grow, the way the ballot question's drafted, really allows you to grow a pretty significant amount, a very significant amount of marijuana, also allows you to give it away. Now, the problem is that that circumvents the tax that the, that is also in the ballot question. So you do have some negatives that come along with home grows. I'll give you an example, Matt in Springfield had someone I know who has a medical card, and one of the very few that can actually grow with it. So he is growing plants in his basement, I'm sure God only knows doing what with it, cuz it's more than he needs. But it's not that easy to grow marijuana. It takes a ton of power, a lot of water, the plants are very big. And so he, he has a small house, and he's got these things jammed into his basement, and he's got water all over the place, and electrical cords running through it. And the, the long story short is that a fire happened at the house, and the whole house burned to the ground. Springfield Fire had to go out and be the one, Springfield Fire and Police had to be the ones to go out and deal with that. But at the same time, they're deriving, Springfield derives no benefit from that home grow, because there's nothing coming back in to, to account for the fact that they've had to spend money on police and fire to go out and deal with it. So that's just one issue that I know the legislature is looking at, and whether they're gonna change that, or what they're gonna do, I don't know. But that ballot question is very detailed, and I expect the final result to look very different than what you see today.
In terms of the medical marijuana, if you're vertically integrated and you're located in your location on Pleasant Street, can you dispense in another location?
Yes, so-
Or is it limited to the location at which you're vertically integrated?
You can both. So in, in East Hampton, it's a cultivation facility and a dispensary, we get three maximum dispensaries. This company has an approved facility in Springfield. So everything that's grown in East Hampton, or everything sold in Springfield will be grown in East Hampton. We're also trying to site near Boston, we're not sure where that's gonna be yet. Watertown, just give you an example, the places we've been looking at, Watertown, Braintree, just a couple of them. Whatever is sold in Watertown or Braintree, if we were licensed out there, would also be grown in East Hampton. So, again, benefits coming back to East Hampton in that you're getting, you're deriving benefits from business in other parts of the state as well. Which isn't the case if it's just a dispensary.
And the way the law's currently written, medical dispensaries have first crack for recreation, right?
Yes, yeah, and, and again, you know, when, when that's gonna be and what that's gonna look like, I'm not sure, because I know that's gonna be changed. But the way the ballot question is now, we would have a first opportunity to do rec, and then after that, they would open that up to other groups.
And the medical marijuana is not taxed, but recreational would be?
Yeah, so, so that's one of the questions, is kinda how that will work. People will say, well, will medical survive if recreational exists? What you could see is a scenario where, and I think this is gonna come out in either the CMRs for the rec, or the amendments to the law. But what you're gonna see is that, that's probably gonna change. The, the tax rate right now, in the ballot question allows for up to like twelve and a half percent taxes. And there's a, I think it's a two point five percent opt-in tax for the municipality. So, East Hampton would, for recreational, be able to opt in at two and a half percent. But on the medical, there's no, there's no-
Right.
Sales benefit. One of the things we did do was start to talk to the mayor and town, uh, town council, the city council, town council, Jack Bitts-Givens, about doing a host agreement and possibly providing some gross revenue for sales from the medical side, as well as recreational side. So that's something that we're talking to them about, to get some other benefits deriving back from East Hampton.
Sure.
So that's on the table as well. And, you know, as we looked at the zoning ordinance, we, we tried to say, where, where could this possibly be improved to help the business, which would help, I think, we think, East Hampton? Because certainly if there's an agreement for either medical sales with a percentage, or through the opt-in tax on the recreational, the more sales you can have in East Hampton, more money's gonna go back to the municipality. So, you know, all those things are on the table, but there were, you know, I don't wanna get into the zoning yet, until you guys tell me you're done with questions. But there were a few things in there that we identified where we could say, you know, if these tweaks were made, this would put us at a competitive advantage, say with Northampton. It could lead to more revenue for East Hampton with added sales, or more jobs. So there's a lot of different things like that.
And I would assume that you submitted projections for your company?
Sales numbers, we didn't do that here, but we do have projections that we could provide.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we could do that.
Any other questions before we, cuz I'm curious to, cuz I was involved in writing this, so I'm curious to see what kind of, which, I don't have any ownership over it at all, but-
But he would like a parade.
But I'm just curious.
And, and I get, you know, you guys have a balance that you have to strike between the business and- So the things that I would, I would recommend are not things that I would like. And certainly, we understand where you're coming from, that, that would negatively impact residents, cuz that's not something we wanna see either. So we tried to keep it in, in reasonable suggestions, and obviously, they're just suggestions, you guys are the decision makers, so. The, the first one that we had identified was the delivery time. The current ordinance has an eight to eight time for sales or delivery. We don't have a need to start sales earlier than eight AM, but delivery would be beneficial for a couple different reasons. We're putting together our operating plans and procedures, and having some flexibility to start before eight AM would be beneficial. We also think it would be helpful for the other tenants and our neighbors at the mills, quite frankly, because a lot of them are coming in to do business at eight, nine o'clock in the morning. And if all our deliveries and transactions have to take place at eight, that's gonna be kind of a bottleneck time. So that, to have, to be able to do it a little earlier may provide some relief to them as well. The other thought that we had is, we would like to be able to randomly and kinda stagger deliveries for safety reasons, so that somebody doesn't know every day at eight AM, we show up with cash, or we leave with our cash. So to have the ability to say, we do it at six today, at seven the next day, at nine the next day. To be able to do that adds some security, so.
Okay, so I'm curious, you know, what would be a timeframe that would work better?
We thought six AM.
So between eight, or is eight, so, cuz the way it works is like, between the hours of eight PM and eight AM. So would that be eight PM and six AM, or would you want ten PM and six AM?
Yeah, so this has no deliveries between, yeah, so you'd move it from eight PM to six AM, cuz that, that would allow for us. Now, we would still have to go to the planning board to amend the, the special permit?
So what would you suggest, how long hours would you suggest?
For deliveries, no deliveries between eight PM and six AM, as opposed to eight PM and eight AM. That would allow us to move up a little on the other side. And we, anything that would happen here, we'd have to get our special permit amended anyway, so that would have to be a step that we would take too.
Okay, how else would this help you?
I, I would-
By moving the timeframe?
Well, we had a few different reasons why, one, I think we could be less disruptive to the other people that are over at the mills and East Works. The second being staggering the time of deliveries, whether that be us sending cash out, or whether that be product being sent out. To be able to stagger that between, say-
It couldn't be staggered at eight AM?
The difficulty is there's less room to work with, we don't have as much flexibility.
Well, and plus, it's probably gonna be more, more of a busy, more of a busy environment. And if you're moving large quantities of cash, then probably less busy is probably more advantageous.
The other benefit for us would be, if the dispensary's closed, we have some more, there's some more freedom for us to be able to work throughout that dispensary, as opposed to if they have patients and people that are there as well.
So you'd be planning on having patients from eight AM?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't wanna move up the time for patients, but to, to have the ability to do some deliveries and other things like that at six AM would be helpful.
Let out your notes.
Right now, we're planning to do the eight to eight.
What kinda, what kinda trucks are you anticipating for delivery? Like, are you talking about big diesel trucks that'll be loud and disruptive coming in at six AM? Or are you talking about a smaller minivan, like, do you know?
It's probably gonna depend, I mean, we have some thoughts on what it might be. I think the idea is you're probably gonna see some armored cars, you're probably gonna see some vans, you might see a small truck. But it's hard for us to say, two years from now, what could that look like? If, if the demand is as high as we potentially think it might be, and if we have a site near Boston, there could be a lot of production out of this facility, and potentially, we could expand the size of the facility we have. Would that maybe necessitate a larger truck at some point, it's possible? I don't know how much we'd have to ship down to, to the eastern part of the state.
And the way it currently is, forgive me if my memory doesn't serve me, but there is like a, almost like a holding area for the vehicles to go in, right?
Yes.
So, so once they pull in, they're, it's like they're in a garage that's closed.
Extremely secure, like the Mantrap?
So it's not like they're gonna be idling out in, out in, you know, next to people's residences?
Secure loading and delivery.
Maybe a visit would help us to understand that better.
Yeah, we, we can walk you through that and be able to show you, here's where the deliveries are and all that.
I just remember Karen loving the idea of the Mantrap.
Mantrap, the Mantrap.
Yeah, it's an interesting term, right?
And, and obviously, when this was first even instituted and even a thought to happen, our very first meetings were, you know, based on security, you know, security for community, and obviously, and what type of security was in place. So that's when Mantrap, which is the same way that, you know, the deliveries come in, basically, they're, you know, the, the door opens, they go in, everything shuts, and then the next one opens. So, same thing for people. So the security is, is extremely secure, and, and actually, the requirements by the state far exceed the requirements locally.
Right. Yeah, I mean, in thinking of security, I would think about more like a prison than a drugstore.
Right, a pharmacy.
A pharmacy, yeah, exactly, so, that's probably their term.
And, and being here from, you know, from Denver, like, obviously, all of that was going in extreme detail. But they were well-prepared and had all the information way ahead of time. But, you know, I do know that we had our, you know, our chiefs here, both sides, and, and their staff. And those, the very first meeting was the number one, the number one concern.
Which I think is absolutely ironic, that we don't have these security measures for the scourge of opioids that are raging so much havoc on us, and then here we are, taking marijuana and putting it in lock boxes, and we have OxyContin on the street, just go buy in a paper bag, unreal.
I, I was talking to somebody, I was talking to an attorney in Pennsylvania who does this work, and he said, I think it's easier to handle plutonium than it is marijuana. I mean, it's, it's a little excessive, I mean, when you consider the fact that you could walk into a CVS, and there's really no security, and the street value of those drugs that are there significantly is more than the medical marijuana, and there's really nothing there to prevent you from walking in.
Well, and the potential harm.
The potential harm, for sure, yeah.
As we have been seeing all too up close lately, so. Alright, that's good, any other things?
Yeah, so I'll go through a few of those. One of them was, was the sales time at night, so right now, it stops at eight. Ideally, we'd like to see that go later. There's, the main reason is, we feel it'll put us at a competitive advantage with the Northampton dispensary. They have an eight o'clock closing time, if East Hampton has one at nine or ten, potentially, they could drive business to East Hampton, which would be beneficial, certainly if there's percentages of sales, whether that's the recreational or host agreement, there would be benefits coming back to the community for that. I think the question would be, is, is there a negative to go to nine or ten o'clock? You know, we're not in a residential area over there, the dispensary actually is in the back of the building, so anyone that would come there would come to the back. So we would hope that there would be no disruption to residents to go to nine or ten o'clock?
I think, I mean, there's, there's breweries back there that are open till ten, eleven, maybe?
Or, or maybe.
Or, or, yeah, so, I, I think that's something that we could take a look at and discuss.
Yeah, we feel, we just feel that it, it will get competitive, there will be multiple dispensaries, and to have a piece like that, particularly with Northampton down the road, it's just gonna put East- it's just going to put East Hampton in a better position than Northampton. Because they get percentages of sales too in Northampton, so.
And the breweries in the back, maybe to certain days of the week?
No, they're open seven days.
They're open seven days?
Yeah. A band in might be, have more limited hours, but New City I know is open seven, seven days a week.
Yeah, how many hours?
I think they're, they've expanded their hours, I think that they're, like on weekends, they're open till like 11 or.
Well, but the limits are their own.
The limits on their own, yeah, that's not, they're not, that's not by ordinance, yeah, yeah.
And I mean, we wouldn't want to see a late night thing over there, but having the ability to go to 10 is, we think probably reasonable, 11 is probably a little, at least now.
Okay.
The other thing that we identified was the size of the dispensary, there's a 2,500 square foot cap. I don't think that's a problem for medical, the only thing that we're thinking of with that, if at some point we can add a recreational piece if the city wants that, if you were to work into the ordinance that it could be larger than 2,500 square feet, that would accommodate that change later because you would need the additional square footage potentially for recreational.
So, I'm trying to get a vision of how this would work. So if you, if the recreational, you guys had first crack at it, would you be looking to convert your, the space that you're in to kind of have like a separate but equal, like one medical entrance here, one recreational entrance here? Or you go in and just one and you're either medical over here, you don't pay tax, recreational over here, you pay tax? Are you looking at the same space or are you looking at potentially another space in town? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so at this, we would look, we would definitely be in the same building. So the question would probably be, what do the regs require?
Right.
Do they, like in Colorado, they require separate entrances, one for medical, one for recreational. That doesn't exist today.
Okay.
The ballot question does say that there, that you can't prohibit them from being located in the same place.
Right.
But, you know, we, I could see a scenario where we probably would want to just expand the size of what we have now. And we have some unfinished space in that first floor that we just didn't need. But we could probably expand into that space. If it needed to be a separate entrance, we would do that as well. But to have some flexibility to increase the size, particularly with recreational, you may have heightened demand. East Hampton could be one of the few spots in the state that has recreational, which could probably drive a lot of people here. So we could have a need to be bigger than 2,500 square feet on the dispensary floor. There's not now, but just having it in the ordinance and having the ability to just go for amending the special permit as opposed to having the ordinance redone makes it a lot easier down the road. Just thinking forward to potential recreational.
Thinking forward to recreational, do you envision adding on any, I don't really know how they make edibles with marijuana, but I would assume you'd have to have some kitchen equipment and stuff, like are you thinking of that for the long term at all?
Yeah, we've got to get you guys through there so we can show you.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's there now, those will be products that we'll sell. They have to be processed, so you'll take the raw plant, process that to be able to create the edibles or vapors or whatever it is that we're going to be selling.
Uh huh.
Whatever particular product it is. So that's there, that, and whether that would be available in rec right now, it would. Whether the legislature says no edibles for rec, it's possible they could do that, then that would be out.
Okay.
And the other question I had, if you had one interest for people who have medical and recreational, would you, I could imagine someone with a medical card saying, give me the money, just give me five dollars of a kickback and I'll get it off my medical card rather than you having to pay tax on what you're buying. So I'm just curious if that's something that you've considered at all and how you would stop that?
Yeah, I guess I hadn't considered that, but we will have security on site, a lot of security, as we kind of talked about. So we're going to be looking out for things like that. Also, there are caps on how much you can buy for medical and it seems like the caps are very high. In fact, I looked at them and said, well, no one will ever need that much marijuana. But they just, at Hoyoke Community College, had a forum with the DPH to talk about, we're making changes to our regs, what do we need to do? There was, Alexa and Tom were there with me. I was surprised at the number of patients that were there saying, this isn't enough. I need more and you need to lift that. So it doesn't seem to be quite as much as you think. So if you really have a medical need for it, you may not be in a position where you can just say, here you go, I'll sell it to you.
Yeah.
They might be making their own concentrates or whatever.
Well, yeah, potentially, I guess they could, I mean, they could buy a raw product and try to process it, but.
Okay, no, I am just to be, running up against my window of time here.
Okay, all right.
So if you have any other things, I mean, we can, we'd be happy to have you come in again if you're interested, but unfortunately I have a prior, minute seven.
I'll just give you two really quick ones. We just would ask that if there's recreational hours, that they be consistent with the medical hours, whatever the times are. And they allow for medical and recreational on the same site, which is actually in the ballot question now, so that's the state law. And then I didn't know if there was consideration for establishment of distances for dispensaries and part of this comes down to how many of these do you want in town? We've talked to the mayor about saying we would like to do a host agreement. Exclusivity would be something that we would like if the city would like to do that. It's kind of a question of how many of these do you want to have? Certainly keeping the numbers down, the distance requirement, Springfield has that requirement that basically says, none of these can be within 500 feet of another one of these. And by function of that, it keeps the numbers somewhat reasonable. You know, as I mentioned before, we've made a pretty significant investment in East Hampton that anybody who just wants to dispense will not have made. So some type of protections like that for the business that's going to be there and the employees and the money that might be coming into the city would be something that would be helpful as well.
Okay.
So that's it, that's all I had.
Great, sounds good.
I don't want to keep any longer.
So we can arrange maybe a walkthrough at some point?
Yeah, and that's easy because we're there all the time, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, Salem, if you send me an email, just give me a few dates and I'll get them worked out.
Sounds good, sure.
Please invite me.
No, of course, we need to represent from the planning board.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you guys for being all this analysis, appreciate that.
Absolutely, no problem.
I have to say, East Hampton has been such a good place to do business.
I'm glad to hear that.
As you can imagine, we've gone a lot of different places and we get different treatment. So we get a lot of different treatment in different places.
Yeah.
And you guys have just been great here, from fire, police, the mayor and planner, the planning board, everybody.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to echo that one out, East Hampton's friendly to business. Remember that, these people used to say all the time how we are so unfriendly to business.
Well, again, there are new procedures of having meetings ahead of time where everybody knows exactly what's required. And, you know, when you show up to our meetings, whether it's the planning board, the zoning board, or wherever, and you have everything in place as required, you know, it really speeds the processing.
Yep.
And you know what's expected of you and you comply, so it's just a great way for me.
Ma'am?
Yeah?
Please, thank you. I'd just like to add, as I remember the planning board, that they were the most well-together company I've ever seen come before the planning board, ever, for me.
Wow.
And they're very well organized, this is a business we need to be supporting, we have an opportunity in East Hampton to get out ahead of this. This is not something that's going away and this is a big shot for us. There are difficult decisions to make, I know. And I encourage you to support this business, make the decisions and do it swiftly. And as I always know you do, I tell you.
Why, thank you so much. All right, great, thanks for coming again. Unless you guys have anything else, I think we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Should we set a next meeting first?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Saying that there's a February eighth meeting?
Yeah, but, it's time we can make it.
That's what I thought was going on, so I keep trying to say like.
So we're going to have to, we're going to reschedule that one.
It's not on the city calendar or anything like that, I've been a couple of aggressive about it.
I am on this search committee for a new provost and president at my college. Nice.
No, we could always, we could, I wonder, I just, I've got to be careful on Tuesday and Thursday. Do you want to just set our?
I think we should go to the following.
The 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay.
February 22nd?
Yeah, February 22nd.
And are you going to have the full agenda on the 22nd or are you going to do a separate sanctuary city?
No, we'll probably have a full agenda and we'll have the sanctuary city too. I'm not necessarily going, I mean, we know what people think at this point. And so I think maybe what we do is start strategizing ways to, you know, move forward, so.
Cool, because I've got language for you for that now.
Okay. And that would be six PM on the 25th.
Twenty-second.
Oh wait, why am I January? That would have been, that would have been.
Could be a problematic.
Six PM?
Six PM, February 22nd.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Just make sure, make sure.
I can never spell ordinance committee.
Move to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I would just like to, again, say to Salem that I really think you did a really nice job moderating a very tense meeting. And I really think that you opened it up with clear expectations of everyone. And for such a tense issue, the overwhelming responses I've been hearing was that, even if they don't agree, at least we're up to have that conversation in a mediated forum. And I really think that you're to thank for that.
Well, thank you, because I felt like I could have done better, so I'm working on it next time.
No, no, I would second that, because I told everybody that I talked to him, you've heard. You're going to agree with me, you cannot agree with me, but you will get heard, I promise.
It was so funny, because I tried to like, I was like, all right, this meeting, I'm just going to stay impartial and I'm just going to listen and I'm just going to like be super fair. And like I got emails like, you're so biased and like, and the only time I gavelled someone was the applause because they were attacking, first of all, they attacked us, but they were attacking Tammy. No, you don't, no, you don't attack, we are just trying to serve our community. We're doing the best that we can, you're going to come up here and shame us and attack us? No way. I'm sorry, that's not going to stand.
I think everybody got a chance to be heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A few times it started to go in a different direction.
And JP, you stepped up too, thank you, I appreciate that.
I think everyone was very attuned to the thinking this was a simple, very simple process. And I think it was.
It was, for the most part, yeah.
For the most part.
And I can understand you have strong opinions.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that hurt me was the, what I heard afterwards, some of the undertones that were said to people when they sat down, some of the evil things that people said.
My little corner was particularly cranky.
Yeah, it was, that was disappointing, that was disappointing to me.
You know, like there was like some people kind of barking back and forth at each other.
You know, I don't know if you heard that, but it was, it was pretty nuts, it was pretty sad.
I hadn't, I'm pleased that I didn't.
Yeah, so anyway, but we did our jobs, right?
We heard publicly, I think everyone got their, got their.
Yeah, so thank you, appreciate that.
And I'm very grateful that kids didn't come through.
No.
I was so scared the entire families would show up.
Oh, yeah.
And I knew it was going to.
It was tense.
You guys created such a good environment that there were people who hadn't expected to go up and speak. We're like, I can absolutely go up and speak. And I think that, and there were quite a few people that were like, I'm very surprised that I went up and spoke. But you, you guys really did a great job of creating that environment.
The citizens credit, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think the credit goes a long way for all of East Hampton.
It does, so hopefully the next one will be really civilized and we'll move forward right away.
Wonderful.
Yeah, all right, so now we'll take that motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, sounds good.